Mic check.
Take that mic from the end?
We can hear you, Jeff.
This one?
Yeah. Put that George here, please.
Okay. Hello. Testing, testing. How's that?
Very good. We check what we're going to say. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Are we up there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so table ready? Let's be honest. I think we're recording on Zoom, that's right.
I'll say.
Are you ready on that? Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to meet in order. The Town of Dayton Planning Board, June 15th, 2022. Please join me in pledging allegiance.
Recording in progress.
My allegiance is to apply my United Nations and our international standards. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Certainly, I'm a gentleman here to be able to see if everybody heard that. I'm looking for the next meeting for July 20th, 2022. And spending a little bit of time to the first order business, which is Agenda Item 4A. A review, act, and discuss BWC Greenbrook LLC, Blue Wave Solar. And specifically, review proposed energy storage units interpretation, special prevent certified notice and decision dated June 18th. And Carrie, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, this is going to be really awkward. I think it might be better if the meeting is on there because I've got no audio, I get zero audio feedback here on Zoom.
How about?
Something I'd like to listen. And I can't hear that, that's okay with.
Jeff, you can't hear?
Yeah, leave that on. That's on right there.
How about now? Can you hear us now?
Say a little better. I can hear you. Okay. Yeah, most better.
Okay.
I'm speaking in.
They might just speak into their pocket times.
All right.
We have one here too, please, sir. Joe.
Jeff?
So for him to hear you, you want to make sure you're loud and clear in here.
Okay.
I don't have one because I'm not important.
Yeah. I don't know why I have this.
See?
As soon as you say your mic's down, it goes completely quiet. Okay, everything again.
Don't worry about me.
About now.
Unless you're just going really quiet.
No, that's mute.
Anything now?
Yeah, it's working now. Whatever you're doing now, just keep doing that.
Okay. I'll hold my finger on it.
Okay. So, as you can tell on remote, so sorry for the additional complication here tonight. But what we have before us here, members of the board, is a new packet. We look at a letter dated February 7th, 2022, Field Engineering Company Incorporated, on behalf of the Greenbrook LLC of Kara Blue Wave Solar, Blue Wave Solar, at Corner of Tremont and Middle Street. And I've had a chance to review the information that was provided, and once I had a chance to go back and look at the YouTube videos. But, I mean, at this time, is there anybody on the board that would like to? Any other questions or any comments on what was presented here in the packet?
I don't have any questions at this point.
No questions.
Okay.
None here.
Okay, is there anybody from the developer relating to stuff that's on the microphone and talk to us?
Yeah. Rich Riccio from Field Engineering, on behalf of BWC Greenbrook. I submitted this letter back in February in response to some of the discussions the planning board had at our modification meetings with regards to the status of energy or battery storage on the site for the proposed solar array at 903 Tremont and 624 Middle Street. As I stated in the letter, it's our opinion that we did get, we did cover energy storage in the 2020 modification to the permit on Cabral's prop, on Mr. Cabral's property. And it is actually even stated in the decision under number three in the, on the first page with regards to installing a second equipment pad for energy storage. The energy storage strictly refers to the permit on Mr. Cabral's property. That's where the equipment pads are located. And I guess we're just looking for clarification or an interpretation from the board that we did, in fact, have this permitted, and it would not require a major modification from the planning board at this time.
All right, thank you. This is Easter Day. We talked before about the language not being present in the decision. And I did this back and forth, and thank you, sir, for pointing out number three, that they do actually have language in there specifically referring to the, to modify the layout of the array, this is number three, to the southern side of the property and install a second equipment pad for energy storage in a residential district in accordance with Section 4, 654 under Town of Dayton zoning bylaws. Is that, is that something we still want to see if we want to try to amend, or? Carrie?
I.
Is that sufficient, do you think, to have more discussions?
I think we should defer this to the building commissioner at this point. And have him take a look at it and then maybe have counsel as well, because again, it says energy storage, and when we talk about specific battery storage too, I'm not too sure of the differences. So I think maybe the building commissioner should probably offer his comments on that.
All right, all right. Okay. I'm sorry, who was the, who was speaking on behalf of the developer? Sir?
This was Rich Riccio from Field Engineering.
Rich Riccio, good. Yeah, Mr. Riccio, what we're talking about is, I understand where you're coming from, and having gone back and reviewed YouTube videos and all the discussions and seeing it under drawings, I can, you know, initially, I think we overlooked it, but I think for due diligence, we're going to have to go back and just have the commissioner review this. But are you familiar with the SOP memorandum that was granted and recently approved in Town of Dayton?
Yes, yes, we are. And with regards to the site plan aspects of that SOP, we do comply with all the setback requirements, the locations of public water supply and such, and the setbacks from property lines and entry lines with the location of the energy storage as it's shown on the approved plans.
Okay, great. So what we were discussing, what we're going to have to, as a town, to just review, give diligence to go through that with the building inspectors concurrents, we're going to have to, I think we're going to have to try and, for tonight, I think we have to, we have to continue this, table this to a future meeting to give counsel as well as the building inspector a chance to review this additional information. Does that sound, make something we want to move on with?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, James Aguirre, I'm here at the podium.
Oh, you are here?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, I, obviously, I agree. I think tabling is appropriate. Based on what I'm seeing, I think that more than likely, after I confer with counsel, I will have to agree with the applicant. However, I want the board to know that the permit from my office and the fire chief are also in order, and we are going to apply the regulation in the SOP and all the nomenclature set forth, you know, when we issue the permit. So I'm glad to hear that you comply. That seems like that will be a fairly rudimentary process. So I think we'll be able to move forward in a positive manner where we'll follow the SOP and this project can move forward in compliance.
Okay, yeah, we're leaning towards a minor modification, not a major, so we're requiring public hearing, but because we want to make sure that we got the proper language and the decision and everything moving forward, so we're more on that by move. Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Point my hand. Also need, also need to discuss and also go through your office and the fire, I'm sorry, who was the other?
Yeah.
Building inspector?
And the fire chief. There's a permit from, from both offices required. The fire chief permits battery storage specifically, and of course, my office permits the entire project.
Right, so fire chief and building inspector. So, Mr. Riccio, that's what we're, what we're going towards at this point. And if we table this, do you think, Mr. Aguirre, that the meeting next, meeting next month will be sufficient? Or do you think we might have to push this out? Or is that all that question? Carrie, curious how Mr. Cavill is, maybe turn around time a little.
No, I mean, if you need to get, it sounds like you wanted to just confirm with town council that the language in the permit is sufficient for us to move forward with the building permit and the fire department permit process with, I don't know, would the planning board need to have any more, any further action at this time?
I think, I think the only thing we have to do at this point is just, when we're done talking, we can vote to either table or continue, which will make the most sense, Carrie.
I have our attorney here as well, Tom Reedy, who just might want to add a little bit to this.
Thanks, Rich. For the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst. I was here, pick a number, two years ago when this was initially permitted, I remember a few of the members of the board, there was a couple new members. You know, I think to Rich's point, it seems like if the permit, because obviously, there was a discussion during the hearing, if the permit includes what we're saying it includes in that Section 3, it should be up to the zoning enforcement officer to interpret that. And so we may not need to, just because this has been in front of, you know, the letter was written in February, the discussion started in January, it's now June, you know, Blue Wave's got to order these, the batteries, they have like an eight to nine month lead time to actually get them. It's already been a pretty long delay, so, you know, I don't know that we necessarily need to continue this. It might be, let's have a conversation with the building commissioner, I'm happy to talk to counsel as well. And then if it does have to come back before you, then we just come back before you in the natural course of things, instead of requiring us to come back to you if it's, if it's unnecessary. So that's just one point on the process of it, and then a little substantively, as far as the standard operating procedures, I think there's just one that currently we don't comply with, and it's the height. I think you have a 10-foot height allowance. I think we're at 10 feet, 8 inches. And so we would just, you know, understanding that there's not necessarily built-in a waiver provision, but we'll talk to the building commissioner about that as well, especially understanding that these approvals occurred prior to any implementation of those standard operating procedures. So I guess our suggestion would be is, let us try to work with the building commissioner, town council, fire chief, to get it, what we have already here approved, and if we do have to come back before you, then we'll, we'll talk to Mrs. Easterday and hopefully be in front of you at your next meeting so we can get this going.
That sounds reasonable, great. Any members on the board have any questions or comments on that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to bring your attention, I was just looking at the decision and the dates on it. This is a 2020 decision. They have not received a building permit yet. I want to make sure that we're keeping in mind, if there are any extensions that are required, that the board is considering an extension, so we don't have a lapse of the special permit.
So maybe the best thing for us to do is to table this and get counsel advice on this. So I will make a motion to table.
Now, we have a motion to table.
Second.
Another discussion motion, is there a second?
Second. Dan seconded.
Oh.
Dan seconded.
Sorry, Carrie, did you need to jump in there?
No.
I'm seconding. All right, there are a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to do a roll call on that, sorry.
You need to roll call?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so, hey, my role, Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
I can't hear you.
Aye.
Go into the dis.
Press the button.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And Chairman Navarro is also, so that's four eyes. The table that? All right, thank you, Mr. Riccio, Mr. Reedy. And I wanted to let you know that I was supposed to come back if we need you to come back in here to discuss this further.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll, we'll discuss with Mr. Aguirre tomorrow with regards to some of the stuff that we discussed tonight and look forward to hearing back from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Okay, moving on to item number 482, 12 acres for homeowners association, status of development assessment. We received an email from the attorney of 12 acres, who has been heading along her record. You want to get that back in here? Here, okay, come over. There's an email from John Ormison Esquire, and it sounds like it's Wellington. It says, Carrie, as we discussed like four a while ago, the town council is not going to have a chance to renew the H O agreement. I think it's best that we put it over to the July meeting. There's a sense of caring if we cannot fully address this matter, meanwhile, a town store agreement will be tomorrow. See, now it was dated Tuesday, June 14th. So that's tonight, and tomorrow afternoon, this past afternoon, hopefully, we'll be tears on both boards' issues, between July and October. Thank you for your assistance, John Ormison Esquire. Thank you, Mr. Riccio, for sending that in. So we have to make a motion to accept this, or we can, we want to the next one, Carrie?
Motion to continue.
We need a motion to continue.
We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Will we take it to a vote? Sure you're done? My roll call, Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, what was there? This is your first test. And Chairman Navarro is also an eye, so it's four eyes to continue this. Thank you very much. All right. Next Agenda Item is item 43, is we have to assign a community preservation committee member. Had a chance to talk to, to the members who were here tonight, and unfortunately, I never closed them, so unless somebody's willing to announce their, willing as to serve in the committee, I'd like to have a, you know, follow-up conversation with all members. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to serve.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. All right, so, thank you, Mr. Higgins, for stepping up and serving that, in that capacity. And so with that, can change a motion to, will we assign you or appoint you, Carrie?
You will be. Appointing. You can say appointing for me.
Appointing.
Appointing, okay. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Dan Higgins as the community preservation committee representative from the planning board.
So move.
All right, we have a.
Second.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Not further. Mr. Higgins is ready to be part of it. Just want to, especially gratitude for jumping in on this, and as you know, with volunteer positions, if you do one, you do five. So I know you're very busy, so I really appreciate you being able to make yourself available to fill this roles. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, so let's take, take a meeting by roll call. Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
I think Mr. Higgins has the same.
Mm-hmm.
So, and Chairman Navarro is an eye, so it's three eyes. Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Dan.
Motion, Carrie. All right, great. So on to the next item, Business 4B, open hearing for Hunter's Hill subdivision, Long Bill Homes, and special program conservation subdivision modification, and we're not, sorry, we're out there. We have to make a motion to open a public hearing.
Carrie?
Make that motion?
Do we need this first? The serpent update?
We can wait on that.
Okay.
I think he wants to hold off on that.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to open a public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion, a second. Let's take it to a vote by roll call. Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
And Chairman Navarro is also an eye, so motion, Carrie. So is there anybody in the developer who is just to make a presentation at this point? All right, hang on, before you do that, Carrie, should we vote on the feature review, or should we have presented first? This is our order of operations.
Thank you.
So the first thing that we need to do is read the public notice into record.
Thank you.
So the, I'll just, I'll be happy to do that on your behalf. So.
Thank you.
Yes. Town of Dayton, notice a public hearing in accordance with the provisions amassed general law chapter 48, sections nine through 11, and Dayton zoning bylaws, bylaws, section 4300, conservation subdivision. The Dayton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, June 15th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Ave, Dayton, Mass, on the modification application to the special permit for a conservation subdivision known as Hunter's Hill subdivision, known as Dayton Assessor's map 21, lots 8, 9, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 68, 73, 74, 75, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 121, and 130, and map 22, lot 6-02, 85, 86, 87, and 90. The applicant, Long Bill Homes, Inc., seeks, seeks to add 4.341 acres to the project and realign roadways and lot lines to accommodate a total of 140 lots of the special permit finding and decision dated October 16th, 2002, as subsequently amended. Copies of the application and plan may be requested by email at keastarday@dighton-sign-ma.gov, or by visiting the Town of Dayton Planning Board's website. Any person wishing to be heard on the above application should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. Dayton Planning Board, Jeff Carvallo, Chairman. So the first order of business, I would like to make a note, is that the project review, forgive me, the project engineer has submitted a project review fee in the amount of $6,500. And this is from Green International Affiliates, Inc. So in order for them to review the, the plans, the engineering plans on behalf of the planning board, we need a motion from the planning board to accept the fee proposal.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Will we take it to a vote? Here we go, by roll call. Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
And Chairman Navarro is also an eye. That's four eyes, so. That carries. Is that it before we, was that, Carrie?
I'm sorry?
Is that the next, the next step, assuming the developer can present?
So we can, we can, however, I would like to note, and I'm not sure that the board will be ready to act on this tonight. I did have a brief discussion with Mr. Figurito and also Mr. Higgins. The applicant was seeking to have consideration to waive the application fee because for all intents and intents purposes, the way our fee schedule is set, it's, and the way the subdivision is, is being modified, the application fee was very exuberant. Yes. It exceeded pretty much more than what a normal, a traditional definitive subdivision plan would be submitted. So what the applicant has done in good faith has submitted a $500 fee, which is the base application fee. But the board as a whole, I don't think has had a chance to really even consider. I don't even, I don't even know how, this is really an unusual circumstance, to say the least, just because of the way the whole process is. So I don't know if the board wants to reflect on that tonight, or wait until our other board member, Mr. Woods, is here, Vice Chairman, so that the entire board can be together, and Chairman Carvallo, if you want to be here, present so that you can take a look at it and take it at that time. Just something to consider.
Okay, yeah, I'd rather do that.
Okay.
Hold off on this. I'm looking at the email now. Hold off on this. I'm looking at the email now. Was, is that the May eighteen email?
Uh, yes, it was. Yes.
This is the conversation, okay. Yeah, I did miss that a little bit, but yeah, I'm not ready to act. I don't think I'm comfortable acting on this live right now. I think we'll take a moment just to review this.
I'll just make a motion to table this to the next meeting. Is that, would that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, table this particular item.
Yeah, waiver.
Had the waiver gotten to the table? Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, was that, was that a motion to table?
Yes, I'll second that, Jeff.
Okay, so a motion to table, second, to, on the, uh, on the consideration for the waiving of the fee. So we have a motion in the second. It's a table motion, so it's not a non-discussion motion, so let's take it to a vote, a roll call. Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
And Mr. Cavalo is also an aye, so it's four ayes to table.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to hand it over to the developer and the engineer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, it's Evan Watson, W Engineering, representing the applicant Hunter's Hill LLC, Long Bill Homes. With me in the audience is Lee Cassig Nitti, Vice President of Development and Counsel for Long Bill Homes. I have a set of plans here, and I want to present them, but I want to make sure everybody can see them. I know we have some members of the audience, and we need the cameras, so I don't know what a good spot for this would be.
Wherever you choose.
I gave the planning board members an eleven-by-seventeen copy of what I'm presenting, so you can kind of read along. So just a little bit of a backstory here. Back in, as far as, somewhere around two thousand and four, Hunter's Hill was granted a special permit and a conservation subdivision approval to do a hundred and forty lots on the plan shown here. It included open space. It was a conservation subdivision, so the lot sizes were reduced. It had a, plans for, at that time, a golf course and a shared sewage treatment plant. Part of the approval is that they were allowed to build up to thirty-four homes on a Title V septic system, which was installed, and they did the thirty-four homes. And then things kind of sat for a while. So Long Bill Homes came in, they have an option on the property, looking to buy it, and they've already come before you in the past to revise the special permit to eliminate the golf course. So if you remember that, we've taken the golf course away, but we're still going to be providing the open space. And if you also recall, we came back last year to discuss some of the possibilities of modifying this plan set, modifying the permit. And so it's taken a little bit of time, but we've worked our way a little bit through conservation, and we've gone ahead and done the design, and these are the plans that we're submitting here. Go ahead. If I missed anything.
Lee Cassig Nitti, representing Long Bill Homes, I just wanted to point out that the, the reason that it's taken us so long was this design is based on the approved wetland delineation by the Conservation Commission. So it's taken us several months to get to a point where that was a final approved delineation. We wanted to make sure that we had, you know, it wasn't, it's still a gray area, it was locked in.
You have an approval at this point.
We do, correct.
Thank you. So this plan, it's just, again, to refresh our memory of what was proposed back in the day. The green line shows the overall cropping line, and the yellow line shows where the wetland resource areas are. So as Lee just indicated, when we went back, we wanted, we knew that wetland permit had expired, so we went back to conservation, and they asked us to redeline the wetland resource areas. And like you said, we did receive approval of that, of the location of those resource areas. The other thing notable on this plan is you can see the geometry of the project. It comes in from Anderson Drive and Miller's Lane, and it basically hooks around. That's because at the time, the applicant didn't have control of this piece of property right here. And so the, this section of the roadway was developed as a boulevard. So as you came up to it, there was a median in the middle, and it divided into two lanes as we came up here. So since then, this plan here is proposing to modify. Again, it shows the green line as the property line, and the yellow lines of the now approved wetland resource areas. And when we delineated those areas, it was in the middle of portions of our project. So we obviously weren't going to develop those areas anymore. And it was brought to our attention that the current owner now controlled this parcel in here. So we were able to add a portion of that parcel to the development, so that we could actually connect the road here instead of having that hook that comes around. And thus eliminated the need for the double-barrel boulevard. We've been able to increase our circulation for the site, and we are able to still maintain the number of lots that was approved in the special permit of a hundred and forty. Notable in this plan, you'll see we have a couple of these numbered, rented parcels, parcel A, B, C, D, F, and G. Everything but parcel G in those parcels is proposed to be open space. Parcel G, again, when we went through all these wetland resource areas, we were left with not enough areas that provided us with the right number of lots. So we're expecting to use parcel G to throw another short little road off of there to add another eleven lots.
Is that above and beyond what's been approved?
No, so the total number would still be a hundred and forty. And in this last sheet, what I did, if you read the request for modification, it highlights the areas that we're looking to move. And I thought it would be best to overlay the two plans on top of one another. So just to highlight what we're really proposing to do, it's to eliminate the road C and F, just as it runs into the city, or where they were. Eliminate this cul-de-sac, part C. We're taking the detention basin for that and moving it away from the resource areas, so it's actually more than a hundred feet away from other resource areas. We've eliminated its tension basin, but expanded this other one, so we still are able to maintain our stormwater controls. We realigned the entrance to the sewer treatment facility slightly from the way that they've constructed it, so that it can access what was built. And then there's various groupings of lots where we've modified the lots, so they better fit what Long Bill is looking to construct out there. The original plan had some lots that were relatively short but wide. Some were, you know, triple the size of the other lots, so there was inconsistencies with how big the lots were with all the other ones. So we've gone through and we've developed a scheme, a plan, that shows a lot that will fit the, the house that they're looking to build here, that fits in the community, and that gets us to the same number of lots that was approved. I think that's it in a nutshell. Unless Lee had anything to add there. And it'd be, you know, welcome to take any questions that the board might have. Ultimately, we understand we're not going to be asking the board to approve this modification tonight. Obviously, we still have engineering review to do. And then the next thing we are looking to do is, if the board likes our plan, the next step would then to be filed with the Stormwater Committee. So we didn't want to go ahead and do that until we got at least a little bit of cursory input from this board, to make sure that we're comfortable with the direction that we're moving. If we are, we'll go to Stormwater. And then at Conservation, they asked us that once we're basically wrapped up with planning and Stormwater, that they like our plan, and they'd be, they would accept the reviews from those boards and be able to approve there. So that's, that's the roadway we've kind of mapped out between all the boards. So at this point, yeah, I'd like to hear any input you guys might have.
At the previous meeting or one other meeting, there was some changes made on there. Can you highlight on that what that was? So that I can kind of refresh my memory, if that's okay?
Yeah, it was, it was this road that we were discussing moving through here. So initially, we were just looking at basically cutting this little spur road off. And we had planned on keeping this road that came across, but when we spoke to you at the last meeting, we asked you if you liked the idea of extending, which is Miranda Way, and then changing Clubhouse Drive from the boulevard-type road to a single road.
Okay.
And that's what we discussed last time.
So the, the primary change is just that. We were able to get Mr. Almeida, four years ago, purchased this parcel from the Town of Dayton. And previously, the previous developer didn't own or control that parcel, it was owned by the Town of Dayton. So they had to do that odd configuration. It was, there were no, there was no throughway, the entire development was a dead end. So it happened to be kind of fortunate and fortuitous that Mr., I don't know if Mr. Almeida had foresight, or it just was, was just chance, you know, luck. But he acquired that property, and when evidence picked up and noticed that, we realized that we could do that as a complete throughway, so that you had an entire
Complete loop, which is much, much better for
So that's, that's really, and, and, again, fortunately, the land area that, that this occupied was some of the best developable land throughout the entire community. It was more upland, and it was far more user-friendly, and it was, so we were developing away from the wetlands, even, even the wetlands that had extended beyond what they were, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, I think
Mr. Chairman?
We'll wait for the review.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the, yeah, I remember that meeting when you came in and showed the the original from November twenty-third, twenty twenty, where you had the large cutoff there, and then you were proposing, closing that gap. And I, you know, I remember at the time, and I think we all agreed on the board, because that was just an initial, you were coming in to get a feel for what we thought about, what, what that would, if that would be more agreeable, and we were all on the same page, it would definitely be a much better design. So I'm glad to see that. You got out, and obviously taken a little bit of time, and laid this out, and that's what you're presenting tonight. So I mean, I, I'm happy with what you've got here. And it doesn't sound like there's any other objections from any members of the board, but I'm going to leave it up. Mr. Figurito, did you have any other concerns or questions on what you're seeing here?
I think Mr. Aguirre would like to speak, so I'd
Sure. Mr. Aguirre, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board. Yeah, so a couple of comments. First, I want to let you know that I've worked with Long Bill Homes in the past on several subdivisions in multiple communities, and they're a Class A developer, so I would look forward to the opportunity to working with them again. I think the project would finally be finished if Long Bill were to be able to get what they need and acquire the property. So I'm glad to see you here. I do have a question and a concern that's quite important. I am actually the one who prohibited any more issuance of permits because of the current septic system. So as you know, we're only allowed to get so much flow to that septic because it's not what was originally planned. So my question to you, if you have an answer, is to move forward, that's going to be a big question from the town, is what are we going to do with the sewage from these homes? So I'd like you to elaborate on that.
Thank you. As part of the original development, there had been a sewer treatment plant that had been Yeah, it was submitted to DEP. Yes, it was. And submitted. That never, that, the permit for that had never come to fruition. In order to, I believe the discharge for this is now with the clubhouse, I think it's rated it for twenty-three thousand gallons. So when you go over ten thousand gallons, you're, you're required to obtain from DEP a discharge permit. So we have updated the technology for that sewer treatment plant, that, that original, as you can imagine, how much things change technologically in virtually every field over the course of fifteen years. The technology's changed significantly, so we have vastly improved the design. The design has been preliminarily approved by DEP, and it is currently being, at, being published, the notice is being published in the Environmental Monitor. That publication began June eighth. It's a regulatory thirty-day comment period to the public. We're not, we're not expecting or assuming that there'll be any comment, at which time the DEP will close out that comment period, and they have forty-five days to issue a, the groundwater discharge permit, which we fully expect will be, based on their initial review, we fully expect will be permitted. And we intend to begin, which we know we, we have to in order to have COs and allow people to occupy their homes, we will commence construction of the sewer treatment plant immediately upon issuance of the permits.
And all the existing homes will eventually be tied into this sewer.
Immediately. Immediately, yes, they will. All, all one hundred and forty homes will be connected. Those will be immediately disconnected from that current arrangement and tied into the sewer main, yes.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Aguirre, any other concerns you'd love to bring to the scene?
Uh, no, sir, thank you.
Alright, thank you, really appreciate it. Mr. Figurito, I'd like to, are there any other questions or concerns?
What I would like to do is just to make a motion to approve this modification. No?
Actually
Way too soon, way too soon.
I'm just, I just want to get out there.
Sorry, miss.
Me too.
Sorry about that.
That's, 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 round of applause, I suppose.
We have
Alright, so I, but, Mr. Cunha, any questions or concerns from the developer?
None here.
Mr. Higgins?
No.
Okay, so at this point, I think I sit, any other members from, any other members from the, I guess, town staff, would like to express any concerns before you open it to the public? I don't know if it's similar to Mr. Aguirre.
No.
You're talking though.
No, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Sorry, I can only hear half of, half of what everybody's saying.
I know, I'm sorry.
They were presenting at the microphone, and I can only see myself, so so at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public, any members of the public who have to step up to the microphone and express any concerns or have any questions with the developer or the planning board. And if you please step up, if you could please state your name and address. So at this time, any members of the public, please.
Hi, good evening. Kevin Perry, thirty-seventy-five Clubhouse Drive. As well as Jim has worked with Long Bill before, I had them build a previous home for me. They always stood up to everything they said they were going to do, very reputable and very dependable, and I know they can get the project to go forward. As a member of my community, I'd love to see it go forward, because we certainly don't want to be stuck with a septic system someday that fails, and we have thirty-four houses there that we have to figure out a treatment process for it. Secondly, the new plan, how it loops around, I think it's really good, because with the dead end, God forbid you ever had a fire down there, that was going to make it tougher for even firefighters or apparatus to get in there with this type of program and this type of loop. I think it definitely improves that. So as a member of, you know, the town, and as a member of our development, which we have like a little pre-association, which we get together and discuss different things, I'm very encouraged to see it go forward, and I'm very happy with the plan that has been set forth, and I know we have some other, other members of the neighborhood as well here that I hope will support it as well. Thank you.
I knew that, that's why I was ready to go.
Anybody else from the public that would like to step up to the microphone, and share any concerns or thoughts or questions with the developer?
One second, Jeff.
Sandy Sudo, my husband David's sitting there. We live on Hunter's Hill Drive. Love the community, happy to have somebody like Long Bill come back in. This was great to see. We're happy that conservation did its job, because we're protected, so all is good. So I know that we're going to get residents who are going to say, but where is the clubhouse? Where are the RVs going to be parked? Things like that. How do we see this on the map? Those are the questions that I have to have answers to for the rest of our residents. Can you help me with what those parcels are?
We'll present that to you.
Okay, because we want to be sure nothing else is lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else?
Yep, one more, Jeff.
Hold on.
Jack Taylor, twenty-nine-hundred Amaral Way. And my question is, where exactly the wastewater treatment plant's going to be built, and how it's going to affect the private wells downstream of it?
Thank you. Is somebody from the developer able to address that?
Very good. Yeah, Evan Watson. The, the treatment plant, so this geometry right here is the existing Title V septic system.
Okay.
And there is no treatment other than what a regular septic system has.
Right.
So all these thirty-four homes, they each have their own septic tank.
Yep.
And then that all gets pumped up into one pump chamber, and then it gets pumped in
And then that all gets pumped up into one pump chamber and then it gets pumped into this septic system. Uh, what we're planning on doing is putting in a, um, treatment plant that meets all the groundwater discharge standards. And I believe it's ten, ten-five, you know, it reduces nitrogen, reduces, uh, BOD and it reduces, uh, solids. And it's almost to, I wouldn't say it's drinking water standards, but it's with the intent that, yes, there are wells, there are private things everywhere else. So, um, it is much highly advanced than a regular septic system. It has secondary treatment, the next step would be tertiary treatment, which would be chlorination, which is not required, but, um, that gets discharged into the ground. And the reason why it's back here is this was the only spot on this whole entire site where we actually found good soil. And as an engineer, we get excited when we see things like good soil and that's some of the best soil that I've ever seen before in my life, before I was, uh, discharging for septic sewage. Um, so you can, you know, stand assured that this groundwater discharge permit is, you know, a much higher threshold than you would have if each one of these houses just had its own septic system.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Watson.
Are you very, you seem to be walking away kind of hesitant. Are you?
Um, I own the property right there adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. Yep. And that, yep.
So this is Williams Street, Old Williams Street, and you are down here somewhere?
Um, pretty much. All of the Amherst, so this is all my property here. And my well is here. And if I ever wanted to sell this property, it would also be a private well, so that would be affected by whatever goes that way.
No, that makes sense.
If I may, is there not water in that, on the?
No.
There isn't no water there at all?
Uh-uh. Once you go past, this is, this is where the last public, uh, access to water is. So all these parcels are all private well and then all of them.
But the DEP permit takes all of that into account.
I'm sorry?
The DEP permit.
Their analysis and their review takes all of that into account. So they're not, you know, they're, they're, their standards, as Evan said, their standards for a groundwater discharge permit is significantly higher than the standards were for, what's in place right now is potentially more damaging and more harmful to this gentleman than the, than the sewer treatment plant will be.
Well, and the other thing is, uh, my experience of, uh, wells where they're drilled, once they hit the bedrock, they go through so many feet and then they seal it. So the chances of water contamination are minimal when it, when it comes to things like that, so. I mean, did I say that correct?
We did. I don't know the specifics of his well, so I don't, hesitant to comment, but, but yeah, generally, that's what we find in this area. Most all of our wells are between four hundred and four hundred and fifty feet and.
Especially bedrock wells, uh, when you drill a bedrock well, the water that's entering into that well might not necessarily be from right around you. It could be coming from half a mile away. You know, it's in the bedrock aquifer, so.
Are you still okay or?
Yeah, no, I'm good.
My main concern is that everybody leaves with the.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, he could have been gone. I mean.
No, you're right. We, we don't want to have problems with people's wells for sure.
I, I work the wastewater treatment plant, so.
Yeah, okay, very good.
I understand.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Watson, for explaining that further. Uh, and, uh, Joe, thanks for, uh, jumping in there. Um, is there anybody else in the public who would like to, uh, get to the microphone?
No.
Anybody want to say a prayer so you can get it done in a couple of years?
I think, uh, um, just, you know, I think you guys know that, uh, Mr. Figurito supports this.
Oh, listen, this has only been going on for what, fifteen years, sixteen years?
And so you're saying that, uh, this project.
Eighteen years, thank you.
Eighteen, all right, okay. So it can legally vote now. Um, right, so I think at this point, um, uh, we say to close the public hearing. Is that, uh, is that what you're?
Motion to continue.
No.
No.
I would, I would ask the board to make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
To make a motion to?
Well, or to continue it. Yeah, maybe they'll make, you can make a motion, but we need to continue.
You need a motion to continue because we need to get the project review, um, engineering review. We need to get those, we need peer review for, so, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to continue.
To July twentieth.
To July twentieth. Good.
In a second.
We have a motion and a second to continue to the July twentieth, uh, meeting. Uh, I mean, a current discussion, we'll take a two vote. Hearing done, let's take a vote by roll call, Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul is also a, it's four ayes to continue this, uh, to the next meeting. Uh, thank you very much, Joe, and we're just getting ready to make our time.
Thank you.
Sorry about the confusion.
No, whatsoever, necessary, thank you.
Uh, it's just so much easier to work with people reputable than it is to deal with people that say one thing and then they came out, come out with another. And I, I, I thank you for doing what you do and keep it up. That's not to say that you won't come in and you won't get here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a good evening. Uh, Mr. Easterday, I'm sorry, Mr. Mrs. Easterday. Um, we, uh, we're down here chatting, we're, I don't, we're all grassing, we're in front of me, uh, for, uh, waiting for, uh, Jeff Carvalho, the chairman, like, something like that. Uh, so, uh, can you, we can tone back and we can cover that. It'll be a really, really brief, uh, and it'll take more of your time. Uh, it's going to be about an hour, so that's okay.
Be my guest.
Okay, so on, um, on, uh, May twenty-fifth, uh, I went to the annual town meeting for Serpent, uh, and, um, the town meeting they hold in West Westport prior to that, they had a, um.
Jeff, Jeff, hold up a second. We, we can't understand anything you've been saying, so. Okay, it's, it's a little bit better now, thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, can you hear me okay now?
I can hear you perfectly.
Awesome.
And I'm deaf.
I'm sorry, what? Um, May twenty-third, uh, twenty-twenty-two, uh, I was at the annual town meeting for Serpent and at the annual town meeting, I just, uh, when I came back, I wanted to share some information, um, with the town administrator, board selectmen, also this board, uh, and the town in general, for an update of what, uh, Serpent is up to. Uh, so, um, one interesting thing, and, uh, Mr. Figurito has also commented on this and, uh, talked, he talked to Carrie about her interest in doing this. Uh, but the Serpent is establishing an internship program at Wichita State University, uh, for, to make graduate and undergraduate students available to help with, um, uh, and within most communities, and Dyke being one of them, uh, to, uh, pay for either a graduate or undergraduate student to do a, uh, an internship at town hall. Now, the, uh, person would either be working on graduate credits or undergraduate credits and, uh, the staff, you know, it needs to be some function within the town that is applicable to their, uh, area of study. So, um, and, but the interesting thing is, uh, this person would be an internship, getting credits, and if there was any kind of, um, uh, pay that they would be getting while they were working with town, uh, that would all be covered by, uh, Serpent maybe covering the fees. Uh, so we need to have a discussion internally. I, I passed it around, uh, as I mentioned, the, um, the, uh, Mr. Figurito, who was on the board here, uh, was very excited about this and, uh, also, uh, Mr. Moll, the town administrator, was also supportive of this. I've got some details, additional details on that that I could pass around. We're initially thinking that, uh, we could have somebody, uh, interning in either the planning board office, uh, helping with, uh, tasks there, or even joining with zoning warrant appeals, if that makes sense. Carrie, I guess we got to talk about if this is something you think would be of value and, uh, it obviously is a two-way road. Um, we'd like to get some value out of it, obviously, if somebody's coming in and getting credits during undergraduate or graduate studies, then, uh, it has to make sense for what they're doing. They, they have, uh, different fields of study, whether it would be, uh, municipal, um, public service, uh, field. So it's kind of open, but, uh, you can gather more details on the passover. Uh, the second item there on, uh, in your packets is, uh, Mr. Jamie Tesler from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, he's the secretary and CEO. He had a keynote speech, um, during the, during the meeting and, uh, mentioned specific items about the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which is the BIL. Um, and, uh, of note, uh, I didn't realize that within Massachusetts, uh, this includes thirty-five different discretionary programs. So, uh, it's a lot of opportunities for grants, uh, for, for, for local development. Total funding is about five years with like big five cycles in opportunities to award grants. Uh, and, uh, larger the match, uh, is increases the odds of award, which makes sense because it'd be, if somebody's willing to match a higher value, uh, and, um, during their down selection program, that would, um, be more, um, advantageous to state of Massachusetts. Uh, they can fund larger projects with a bigger match. Um, and, uh, key, key item was that, uh, the bill, the bipartisan infrastructure bill is not focused on traditional transportation, uh, but also includes environmental, you know, their focused areas. I think locally, we've been talking about, uh, funding internet and water improvements and I think we did get some, some funding from that, uh, locally, but, uh, there are other, other items that we could put in there. And right away, my, my initial thought was, you know, if we start talking about getting an intern, uh, from the either graduate or, or, uh, undergrad program, like, they could do a lot of research into, they'll grant and, uh, looking at things like that for the infrastructure bill, uh, that the Town of Dayton could be eligible for. Um, and, uh, and finally, the, the keynote speaker always also gave us an update on the South Coast rail progress, get the Southeast of Mass and this is going to work its way all the way down to Clark River and Freetown, uh, stations under construction overall. Uh, I didn't realize that this project was actually this far along and like the Clark River, uh, was approaching about fifty percent vacation as of, as of last April. So, uh, that was a little bit of the Serpent meeting. And, um, do we have to vote to accept that report or is it just an update, Carrie?
Carrie, do we have to?
Yes, the question, the, the, we have to vote to accept that report or?
No.
No.
Okay, unnecessary, okay. Thank you. That's, that's it for the Serpent this time.
But thank you very much for that report.
You're, you're welcome, Mr. Figurito. Um, so, uh, next item on the agenda, I'm fine with approval of the meeting minutes for May fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. So accept the motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Make a motion in a second. Take a two vote by roll call, Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins? And Mr. Mr. Carvalho is also a aye, so it's three ayes and one abstention. Motion carries. Uh, uh, Mrs. Easterday, is there any additional correspondence?
No.
No.
Sorry, I tried to give you. Thank you.
No problem. Uh, any additional public input?
No.
No.
Nothing. So at this time, I, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second and take a vote, meet, uh, vote by roll, Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Cunha?
Aye.
Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
And Mr. Carvalho, aye. Don't you guys, meeting adjourned seven thirty p.m. Thank you, your pleasure.